All right. Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock and I will call the fourth regular common council meeting to order. Will the clerk state the quote of the evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes there's not a better way. Sometimes there's only the hard way.
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll?
Alder Person Bellinger.
Here.
Alder Person Bors.
Here.
Alder Person Close.
Here.
Alder Person Decker.
Here.
Alder Person Heidemann.
Here.
Alder Person LaFave.
Here.
Alder Person Menzer.
Here.
Alder Person Mitchell.
Here.
Alder Person Perella. Thank you. Alder Person Rust.
Present.
There are ten present.
Thank you. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Alder Decker, what's your pleasure on the minutes from our last meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes from the third regular council meeting held on May 5th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Minutes are approved. All right. City Clerk, anyone for public forum this evening?
Yes, we have two people signed up. And the first person is Wyatt Benson, please.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, if you could state your name, address, and the item you'd like to address.
My name is Wyatt Benson. My address is 1411 North 13th, and I am talking about TID 25.
All right, then you have five minutes.
All right. Mayor and city, uh, Mayor and council members, I'm once again urging you to vote no on TID 25. Many Sheboygan residents have spoken out against this proposal, and for good reasons. Concerns include the giveaway of public land, substantial developer incentives, disregard for the deed covenant, and most troubling of all, the secrecy surrounding the developer who still remains unnamed. At last week's town hall meeting, which the mayor did not attend, not a single resident voiced support for TID 25. The only endorsements came from city officials, the city administrator, and consultants paid by the city to deliver a slick but shallow sales pitch. Instead of discussing the specifics about TID 25, they offered a generic overview of TIF's function. One slide listed the criteria for establishing a TID, none of which applied to TID 25. This is not just a city issue, though. You have to look at the national stage, too. It's happening in the shadow of larger national economic pressures. Since 2020, the U.S. money supply has increased by 16 trillion, according to the Federal Reserve. The resulting inflation has reduced wages, real value, devalued personal savings, and pushed the dream of homeownership further out of reach for working families in Sheboygan County. The claim that building $400,000 homes will free up affordable housing doesn't hold up under scrutiny. If a homeowner trades up their current home, will sell at much higher price driven by market inflation, not affordability. These homes will be out of reach for the average Sheboygan family, whose median income is only around $71,000. And most critically, we must ask who benefits from this deal? The developers being considered are not from Sheboygan County. They have no ties to our community, no local accountability, and no long-term investment in the well-being of Sheboygan. Once they receive their incentive money, nearly 196 million of the city's total $395 million debt. They will be free to walk away, leaving us to deal with the consequences. They have no reason to prioritize quality or durability because their reputations aren't at stake locally. Their only incentive is to get in, build fast, take the money, and run. This is not responsible development. It's a handout to outside interests at the expense of Sheboygan taxpayers. We are being asked to spend 40 million this year alone on TID-related expenditures without a guarantee of any real benefit from the people who live here. Please think about the future of our city. Endless debt, out-of-town developers, and vague promises do not build a sustainable Sheboygan. Fiscal responsibility, transparency, and putting our residents first, that is the path forward. Vote no to TID 25. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Lisa Salgado.
All right, Lisa, if you'd state your name, address, your item, and then you have five minutes.
Okay. Lisa Salgado, 931 North Fourth Street. Talking about TID 25. Council members, at the recent town hall meeting, not a single citizen spoke in favor of TID 25. In addition, a petition opposing it has gathered over 155 signatures. Many of you have received numerous emails expressing concerns. I believe if you took an honest look, the majority of Sheboygan residents are asking you to vote no on the proposal tonight. Which category are you forming the TID under? Since it doesn't meet any of the qualifications, replacing a sewer that would otherwise not be replaced is not on the list of reasons to establish a TID. The memorial site is public land owned by the city. Decisions regarding its future should follow transparent, public processes, incorporate community input, and serve the public interest. It should not be treated as a private property to be quietly given away or developed without accountability. Until the land is legally sold or transferred, it remains public. Even then, any selection of a buyer or developer, especially when public funds are involved, must be handled transparently. So why is the city giving away 1.4 million in prime land on the north side, reportedly to Pelton, for free? In addition to that, why are we offering 1.6 million in incentives plus allowing the developer to keep the profits from the sale of homes? Furthermore, why is the city committing to over 40% of an $8 million project? We are also deeply concerned that the cost of TID 25 was significantly increased for infrastructure mid-process without going back to the Joint Review Board or the City Plan Commission. What are the proper procedures for amending a TID proposal after it has been submitted? I have sent that question to the city attorney's office, and I still, they couldn't answer it. They asked me to ask Ellers, and I haven't had a chance to do that. But I'm just surprised that Sheboygan doesn't know when a TID has been changed in the middle, what the proper procedure is. Tonight, the citizens of Sheboygan are paying close attention. They want to know if their elected representatives are truly acting in the public's best interest. We ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. City Clerk, anyone else this evening?
No one else this evening.
Thank you. All right, just one announcement. Next Monday is Memorial Day. Just several items throughout the community to recognize this day. 9:00 AM, the parade will start at downtown Sheboygan. Following the parade at 10:00 AM, the Memorial Day celebration will begin at Fountain Park, and this will be hosted and sponsored by the Sheboygan County Veteran Services Office, Lakeland University's student-run program launch, as well as the Kohler Credit Union, who are helping organize this event. Following that event, at 11:30 AM at Dland Park, the Lau-Mung Memorial Program will be held at the Lau-Mung Veterans Memorial at Dland Park as well. So those conclude my announcements for this evening. Next, coming up, we have several hearings regarding some changes to zoning. So I'll open up hearing number six, hearing number one, 2526 pursuant to notice published. This hearing is for the purposes of allowing interested parties and being heard relevant to the proposed PUD GDP designation located at 120 Volrath Boulevard. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
I actually didn't hear who said just the last sentence. Can you say it again?
This is for the PUD designation for the property located at 120 Volrath Boulevard.
Oh, yeah, the next sentence.
That's, that was the last one.
I think you said something about I did want your interest.
Yep, for this item, there's a hearing tonight.
Okay. I'd be interested.
Okay, you want to come to the podium?
No, I don't have anything to say. I just wanted to know about it.
Oh, okay. This is for the public hearing right now. So anyone else on this item? Anyone else wishing to be heard? Last call. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Yep. Yep, you want to come to the podium?
I don't know how this works.
No, it's okay. Similar to the previous, state your name and address.
Okay, it's Bathcarton 2209 North 3rd, so we're neighbors to Rachel Kohler. And you sent this letter out about this PUD, so, which is something about a unit development. So I'm just here to know what's going on. And I know what she's planned, her houses and so forth, but why does that involve a change of zoning? So, that's it. I just need to know more. That seems to be not available.
Okay, and this item will be later on the agenda as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Last call. Seeing none, Alder Decker. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to close the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right, that hearing is closed. Item seven, hearing number two, 2526 pursuant to notice published in letters sent by the city clerk. This hearing is to allow interested parties heard relevant to the proposed amendment to the city of Sheboygan's official zoning map. The purpose of this amendment is to change the use district classification of property located at 120 Volrath Boulevard from sub, excuse me, from class suburban residential SR5 to suburban residential SR5 with a PUD overlay classification. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Last call. Anyone wishing to be, anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to close the hearing.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? That hearing is closed. Item eight, hearing number three, 2526 pursuant to a notice published. This hearing is for the purposes of allowing interested parties to be heard relative to proposed amendment in the city of Sheboygan's zoning code to add pet daycare centers as commercial land use. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Anyone wishing to be heard? Last call. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to close the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right, that hearing is closed. Next, items on the consent agenda, 10 through 17. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive and file all ROs, receive all RCs, and adopt all resolutions and ordinances.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Alder Bellinger.
Thank you. I just would like to ask a question regarding 15 to the police chief, if I may. First of all, thank you for the report. I find these interesting to, to go through and kind of compare where we're at with where we've previously been. And I just have a question regarding the, um, the robberies or thefts. They seem to be up kind of significantly compared to what we've had in the past. I'm just wondering if there's any kind of trend, anything that you are seeing, or any kind of insight to that, or anything that we can do as a council to help assist you with, with that?
Yes, so with robberies, we have a very low number. There's always a little bit of fluctuation. We did have a couple early this year that were related. And if you follow the news, we had one yesterday. This is unusual. We don't have many, but it does not seem to be something that is a trend that where they're necessarily related with each other. We have cleared the majority of those with arrests, and the investigation of the one yesterday is, is also progressing very, very well. As for thefts, theft is a broad category that includes retail theft, which is our largest category of theft. And so sometimes it just depends on how proactive our major retailers are at catching shrinkage and theft that's walking out the door there, as far as how many reports we end up taking. And so I think that, that's what is mostly driving our increase in theft so far this year.
So theft and larceny, then, right? That category?
Right.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You bet.
Any additional questions on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Not able, but I vote yes.
Thank you. Ten ayes.
All right, those items are approved. Items 18, 18 through 25 will be referred to their respective committees. Next, item 26, under reports of committees, RC number 62526 by the Finance and Personnel Committee, to whom was referred General Ordinance Number 1, 2526 by Alders Decker and Perella, amending various sections of the Sheboygan municipal code as to effect changes to the 2025-2026 Council Rules Handbook. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, so Alder Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this short because we've already had this conversation before, multiple times at this point. I'm not opposed to most of what's in the resolution, or rather, the ordinance change, and I do think that is a good opportunity to explore, trying to be a little more efficient, trying to be a better partner with whoever we are working with that is working with the city and needs something to come through council. My only concern is, again, the remote attendance. I like the idea of it being available for emergency. I just continue to want there to be something in writing, whether it's in ordinance or in rules, that makes it very clear what it is there for, and what is appropriate use and what is not. So without that, I will be voting against this, but I like most of the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Seeing no more queues, this is a roll call vote.
Alder Perella, are you still there?
I am. I vote yes.
Thank you. Seven ayes, three noes.
All right, that's approved. Next, item seven, RC number 142526 by the Public Works Committee, to whom was referred Direct Referral Resolution Number 92526 by Alders Decker and Rust, authorizing the appropriate city officials to enter into a contract with Yan Peterson Construction Company for Taylor Drive and Wilkes Avenue Reconstruction. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive the RC and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Ten ayes.
Thank you. That's approved. Item 28, RC number 132526 by Public Works Committee, to whom was referred Direct Referral Resolution Number 82526 by Alders Decker and Rust, authorizing the appropriate city officials to enter into a contract with Muscha Contractors for the Gartman Property Phase 1, Package 1 Construction. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive the RC and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine ayes, one no.
That's approved. Next, item 29, RC number 152526 by the Public Works Committee, to whom was referred Direct Referral Resolution Number 102526 by Alders Decker and Rust, authorizing the appropriate city officials to enter into a contract with Northeast Asphalt for the 2025 Street Improvement Projects. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive the RC and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Under discussion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Ten ayes.
Thank you. Items 30 and 31 will be referred to their respective committees. Next, we got item 32, Resolution Number 32526 by Alders Mitchell and Perella, creating tax increment District 25 and approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries. Alder Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution.
Moved and seconded. Under discussion? Alder Heidemann?
Yes, please, Mayor.
Alder Perella, I have you in the queue.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer, I would like to offer an amendment to this, but I guess one of the most interesting things that I want to know is, Mayor, where do you stand on this? I mean, you weren't at a number of meetings, but I just, I guess, I would just like to hear your opinion on this, Ted.
Yeah, thank you. And I voted to approve it at the Plan Commission, as well as the Joint Review Board, which I'm both the chairman of.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to enter, I'd like to make a motion to change the number of units from 21 to 25.
Can you, for clarity of the record, can you state which sentence or item you're looking at?
That again. It would, in the recommendation, it says 21 units in the, in the proposal.
All right, see administrator?
Yeah, it's in the description of the district. It says for facility construction of 21 single-family homes, the project, and I would like to change that to 25.
So just before you proceed with voting yes or no for a second, just to understand, this is a project plan. This is not a project at all. So we have a developers' agreement, so that whole process, this is just a proposal.
Okay.
So there's, there's no developer here. There's no, all you're doing is approving the boundary and then the proposed project and that discussion about number of units, who the developer is, what the, what ultimately gets built there, what they look like, all of that will take place at multiple other public meetings. This is simply the proposed project plan, and then you can, you can have that discussion at a later time.
Thank you for the explanation. I actually understood that, but I wanted to make sure the other people in the audience understood that what we're approving tonight is just a TID. What goes into the TID, how the TID is formed, whether we adopt a developers' agreement or anything, that's all in the future yet. So this is basically, what we're voting on here is just to establish the TID, and I will be in favor of that.
Thank you. So there's an amendment on the floor to amend the project plan regarding house, homes, correct?
Yeah.
From 21 to 25? Is there a second?
I didn't think there would be, but that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no seconds, the amendment fails. Back to the motion at hand. Alder Heidemann, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Alder Perella?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do understand that this TID is, that we are going to approve the TID in itself. However, the project as it is, is associated with this TID. And therefore, as I expressed my concerns, I don't think that we should TID with the numbers right now, and not for any of the reasons that have brought forward to this. And I have nothing, nothing against the TID because of the numbers of the houses that are associated right now with this TID. Although I do understand that the development can be changed. If that happens, I will reconsider, but tonight, as it is, I cannot approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Perella. Alder Bellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. As the representative of this area for the second district, when I vote on issues, I look at, number one, does it benefit the residents of the district that I serve? And secondly, does it benefit the city overall, and does it make sense? And with that as my guide, you know, I can't do anything but support this. It is a fantastic development for the neighborhood. This has gone on for three years with virtually no action or nobody interested. There's been public outcry that there was no bid process. Well, there was three years or more where people had a chance to put a development together and nothing transpired. So to say that, that there hasn't been an open process and it hasn't been marketed is just, you know, completely false. And, you know, to say that the overwhelming residents of the city are against this, I think that is false, too. There's a, a, um, a group of 150 people that have signed a petition against this. There's four, 49,600 people in the city, so there's about 49,450 people that are in favor of it theoretically. So, I mean, so that's, that's not anywhere near, you know, an overwhelming, you know, population that would be, you know, against this. And I find it interesting that a majority of the people that are against this aren't residents of the memorial area. This is, you know, the, the hospital Aurora was a fantastic neighbor for years and years and years. I've lived in that neighborhood for 30-plus years. When it was gone, the neighborhood endured a lot of issues when the hospital was being taken down, the dust, the dirt, you know, the noise, all that went on for, you know, six to eight months. And then it was a mess for a period of time before it got seeded and the grass took over. So I, I think this is a fantastic development, you know, or the TID. If there becomes a development, you know, that would be even better and, and have houses built in a relatively quick fashion, and then the neighborhood can become whole again. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this, and I look forward to it passing, and I appreciate the support from my fellow council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bellinger. All right. Alder Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of comments on here, so I'm gonna just bring it through. First of all, I mean, the one thing that I wish we could have addressed, or which we could have gotten better, is higher density into this area. I mean, that was, I mean, that's been, I wish we could get better density. The problem is, is the agreement that was signed by the former city administrator kind of locked us out of that. I mean, the, the problem is, is that that area, I mean, single-family homes, there are single-family homes, but there are also duplexes in that area. There are also fourplexes in that area. There are also small office buildings and such like that. But the agreement that was signed by Aurora, by the former city administrator, those things were signed to make single-family homes only. If we can, if we could get away from that, I would be more than happy to be for that because I don't know why, why it was signed that way, but I wish we could get more density into that area. I really do. The problem is, is the, the lot is kind of a, it's kind of a screwy lot. It's, you know, if, you know, if we could put a street down the middle of it, but the problem is it's not wide enough. It's too wide, but it's not wide enough. So we're gonna end up with large lots. It just is the way it is. If we could do something different, I would be, I would be for it. Hopefully, you know, as you said, we can get more than 21 homes. If we can, we can. If we can't, we can't. But I'm hoping that we can. As far as the TIDs themselves, I am, I am for them. I look at the former Kingsbury site. That is the greatest example I can take of it. That site sat for 40 years. We collected no taxes on there at all. We are now collecting taxes on it for the base of it. And in, I would say probably 15 years, we will be collecting full taxes on it. That would not have happened without a TID. That sat for 40 years. I don't think, you know, the Optenberg site, that sat for 20-plus years now. It's been sitting there for that long, and now because of a TID, it is going to be developed. So you want to say, well, we're not gonna collect taxes on this land. Yes, we are collecting. We're gonna be collecting taxes at least for the base of the land right now. So that's one of the things. I also want to bring up, and I, this is a question I wanted to ask the city administrator, it's been brought up that the life expectancy of the TID is 27 years. It can be much lower. It probably will be lower than that. You know, the expected life, 27 is the max, not the minimum. It's the max. So, thank you.
City Administrator?
Yes. So we have a pretty good history of closing TIDs early. Our, our goal is not to make a profit, it's to pay for the costs that need to be covered to do a pro- not to make a profit. It's to pay for the costs that need to be covered to do a project and then close the TID once the projects are done. So, obviously, some TIDs have multiple projects. Some like this are very, very narrow in focus. And, you know, once, once they cash flow and all the costs have been paid, then the TID would be closed. So, the likelihood that it would go the full 27 years, especially a small TID that's parcel-specific like this, it would probably be closed, you know, once it fully cash flows. And that all depends on what's in the development agreement and what costs we're actually picking up. So, that's yet to be seen, because we don't have a developer or a developer agreement that's finalized in any form. We've just got different proposals that we built this model off of. So, the reality and, you know, the, what happens with the tax rate, things like that, all affect it long-term. So, it's a long time out, but we don't go into these. We, we know that they're going to cash flow based on worst-case scenario, and if best-case scenario happens, we close them substantially earlier than anticipated.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up. I just wanna say also, I, I don't think that the neighbors around that area want that to be sitting there empty 10, 15 years down the road. They don't want a big field sitting there, and that's what we need to do is, so, you know, this is what we need to do to get this project rolling and get it going. I believe that the neighbors deserve that, so I'm gonna be supporting it.
Thank you, Alder Decker. Alder Bors?
At the risk of being redundant, I'm gonna just reiterate kind of my perspective on TID 25. It is a mechanism that gives us an opportunity to develop the land and to move forward, rather than letting it stagnate in the situation that it's in. I have concerns about the discussion around the specific proposal. I agree that I think that more density is appropriate to match the neighborhood. I would like to see smaller lot sizes. I feel that the characteristics of the homes in that area should be uniform and that they should fit well into the neighborhood. I think all of those are things that we still have a significant amount of opportunity to influence, because we have not gone through the process yet of officially selecting a developer, of signing off on the agreements with them. And I think that there has been a lot made of the fact that there is a selected developer. None of that has been approved yet. I think that's what gives me peace of mind, knowing that those are still pieces of the go-forward plan, I guess I would say, with TID 25, that we do have influence over, that we can potentially make changes to, which is something that I definitely am in support of. But I am in support of moving forward with the TID at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alder Bors. Alder Bellinger?
Thank you. I would just like to address one other issue that seems to be continually brought up, and that is the lack of transparency. I am a big transparency person. Anybody that has sent me an email, I've replied to it, other than those emails that just said, "Vote against it." You know, that didn't require or ask for anything. But any kind of questions that I was asked, I replied to it. I've met with the opposition or the people opposed to this multiple times. I was on a vacation in San Diego and took time out of my vacation to go meet in a Teams meeting to discuss this. So, and thank you, Alderman, Russ, for you doing the, the committee, the whole meeting, the town hall, in addressing all the questions. So, to say that there is no transparency or lack of transparency, I think this thing has just been beaten to death. It's been, you know, there, if you look on Nextdoor, there is, you know, you see one whole side of it. And if you, and, and there's been a tremendous amount of effort on behalf of the city staff, the aldermen. I know multiple other aldermen have met with people opposed with this as well. And, you know, those weren't short conversations. They're, they're lengthy, lengthy meetings. And, you know, and, and I applaud the effort from the public, you know, to oppose, you know, this, and this is the way it should, should work. But to say that there's lack of transparency, you know, I find that just patently false. And then, to say, you know, you know, to reference the developer, and there is no developer agreement that has been presented to the council. We can't present anything and be transparent with something that we haven't even seen or don't have any of the details on as of yet. So, once that becomes public and is brought forth to the council, that will become transparent to the public, and you can see, you know, who the developer is, what all the terms are, and, you know, what the density, what the lot sizes are gonna be and, and all that. And then, that will go to the Plan Commission, that will go to the council, and the public will have their say in that as well. And that can all, you can meet with the, the developer at that point in time and have questions for them. So, again, this whole transparency thing is, you know, it's, it's just, again, like I said, patently false, and I would just like to put that to rest and commend the city staff and the other aldermen for, for meeting, you know, and addressing the questions that have come up regarding this. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Alder Bellinger. Alder Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this will be short after Alder Bellinger, but I'll just say that I agree with Alder Bellinger. I just wanna say, generally speaking, that I understand there has been a lot of interest in this, and at least for the ninth district. Anybody in my district who's here or who's watching, if you have concerns, if you have questions, we really do want you to reach out to us individually so we can talk those through. We wanna make sure that everybody who is interested has all of the information that they want or need. I can't speak for council officially, but I'm pretty confident I can say that that extends to all nine other districts as well. And I'm more than happy to answer emails, take calls as things come up. There has been a focus on transparency on this. It's just a matter of actually getting that information out and making sure it's available to people. And I'm more than happy to play a role in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Mitchell. All right. Seeing no more cues, this will be a roll call vote.
Alder Person Prella?
Nay.
Thank you. Nine ayes, one no.
All right. Thank you. That is approved. Item 32, Resolution Number 62526 by Alder Bellinger in Close, approving the general development plan submitted by Rachel Kohler for construction of three new single-family homes, a family hall building, a pool and gym building, and a garage with a family apartment above parcel number 59281014410 with a planned unit development zone. Alder Bellinger?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Under discussion? Alder Rust?
Just for the person who showed up for the hearing and asked about this, what is this for specifically?
And I believe we have, is Rachel still online?
I'm here, as is my architect.
Yes, all right. If you guys just wanna give a high-level overview of what you guys are working on.
Yeah, I can't speak to the, the technical aspects of why it's getting a rezoning. That would probably be on my capability, but all I know is we're following the process that was asked of us, which is to really present the details around the, the buildings that we're proposing and the landscape plan. It is meant to be a complex where my family can come. We're based in Chicago, and I have three children. And as a owner of Kohler Company, I feel very, very committed to preserving our, our legacy and appreciation of the community. It's a property I inherited from my father, and I've summered in many, many summers, and so has great personal sentiment to my family.
Thank you. Thanks, Rachel.
I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah. Planning and Development Director?
Hello. To give some more context, the parcel is currently zoned for suburban residential District Five, because with that being said, there are three more structures being added to it that would hinder the current zoning code. So, the Assistant Zoning Administrator, Elise, had suggested that they move forward with a planned unit development. The planned unit development allows them to have those additional three structures.
Thank you. Alder Rust, you good? All right. Other discussion on this item? All right, seeing none.
May I ask something, Mayor?
Yes, Alder Prella?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just for me to understand finally, this, this project is not meant to become a, open to the public or an Airbnb or anything else of that sort?
No, it's not. It will never be an Airbnb.
Thank you.
It's a for family, private family use only.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Alder Prella?
Yes.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. Item 34, RO Number 72526 by the City Plan Commission, to whom was referred General Ordinance Number 422425 by Alder Persons Rust and Prella, amending section 105, 718 and 105, 683 of the Sheboygan Municipal Zoning Code as to add pet daycare centers as a commercial land use. Alder Rust?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the RO.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on this item? Alder Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for my curiosity, because I feel like we've had, at least have had, if we don't still have businesses that operate, that provide this service, why the change to the ordinance? Was it something that just wasn't specifically provided for in the past, and we wanna make sure that it's clear that, that is permissible use?
Planning and Development Director?
Yes, absolutely. It wasn't as clear as we would like it to be, so staff had moved forward with some suggested recommendations.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Under doggy daycares? All right.
Right, right.
Oh, Alder Rust?
Is this specifically for the closure of the building that was on Erie Avenue? All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no more cues, this is a roll call vote.
Alder Person Prella?
Yes.
Thank you. Ten ayes.
All right, that's been approved. Item 35, RO Number 62526 by the City Plan Commission, to whom was referred General Ordinance Number 412425 by Alder Person Bellinger and RO Number 1282425 by the City Clerk, submitting a rezone application to amend the City of Sheboygan official zoning map of the Sheboygan zoning ordinance to change the use district classification of property located at 120 Valrath Boulevard from class suburban residential to suburban residential with a PUD overlay classification. Alder Bellinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I recommend filing the RO and adopting the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Other, under discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Alder Person Prella?
Aye.
Thank you. Ten ayes.
All right, that's approved. Item 36, RC Number 2882425 by the Public Works Committee, to whom, to whom was referred Resolution Number 962425 by Alders Decker and Remy, oh, Alder, Alder Persons Decker, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute a memorandum of understanding with Friends of Shaw Family Playground in regarding to, to the terms, oh, that is referred. That's getting referred.
Going back.
That's going back to committee. I wasn't reading my cues here. All right. With that, we have a contemplated closed session motion to convene in closed session. Alder Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to convene in closed session under the exemption contained in Wisconsin State Statute S 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the city who render oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which will likely become involved relating to the network security incident.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Under discussion? Do I have to say something? Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Ten ayes.
All right. That concludes our public session of the meeting. We will adjourn after closed session.